Good evening, and what a beautiful evening it is to be visiting beautiful Blue Ash. And we will be talking to Mayor Serkin in just a minute. We will move forward on our regular agenda, but I call to order the Hamilton County Commission meeting of May the 20th. Welcome, Madam Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. And we also have our clerk of the board and our county administrator with us this evening. So, welcome.
Thank you.
We'll start out with silent prayer, and I would just ask that as you include, I'm asking you to include in your silent prayer, just a prayer of thanksgiving for the financial blessings that Hamilton County has had delivered to us. This is something that we should not take for granted and something that may not happen again. We hope it will, but just a prayer of thanksgiving. So if we could have a silent prayer. Amen. And now the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And so now I'd like to welcome Mayor Serkin. I see him on there. You can unmute yourself now.
How's that? Is that better?
That's much better. How are you this evening?
I'm great. You know, doing these meetings on so many different formats, I gotta learn each one, and I'm still struggling sometimes, but thank you for inviting me.
Oh, absolutely. It's great to hear your voice again. We were together at the Coroner's grand opening, and so it was nice to sit next to you and talk about the things that Blue Ash is doing. So we'll open the floor for you.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of talking to all three commissioners, and I really appreciate the time. So the idea tonight was to give you a little bit of history of what's going on in Blue Ash, what's new, and I will do it. I know I got five or 10 minutes. I hope I don't go over, and you can always stop me and ask a question if I miss something. So the first things that were brought up were the CARES Act money. We pretty much used it just for salaries. We lost a lot of income with our Cooper Creek Event Center. We lost a lot of weddings and events. Obviously, the hotel tax income was reduced, recreation center income was reduced, and all the other fees that cities charge. What we did was reassign some of our workers, some of our rec department workers actually did some childcare for our fire and our police personnel, which we thought was a great idea. We reassigned even our wedding coordinator was ending up working in the golf courses' sandwich shop, trying to keep people on the payroll, not everybody on unemployment the best we could. City administration did a great job. Obviously, we hired a lot less part-time people for the summer. A lot less people were there for the recreational events that we didn't have. We didn't do Fourth of July last year. We didn't do Memorial Day parades. We didn't, we didn't need to have a lot of staff, so they really were able to pare that down. As far as what we're gonna do with the American Rescue Plan money, we are still looking at that. Obviously, that just, those parameters just came out recently, and I don't have any information of how we plan on spending that for tonight. Our budget's healthy, though. People way smarter than me, many years ago, started building up a nice rainy day fund. So Blue Ash is not in any imminent need to, even if the state changes our funding, we're not gonna be looking at fire and police layoffs. It's gonna be more of a gradual transition as people retire out. But we're looking at, you know, possible 10, 15, 20% reduction in income if the tax structure is changed at the state level. Some of our events, Red, White, and Blue Ash is a big event, probably over 100,000 people on a typical year. We are going to have the fireworks this year. We are not having a concert. We're not gonna have the all-day events. That's gonna have to wait till 2022. Similar to our Memorial Day, we typically have a parade. We are gonna have our Memorial Day ceremony. Summer Concert Series is gonna start a little late. We have concerts on Tuesdays and Fridays, Tuesdays at our nature park, and on Fridays, we have it in downtown Blue Ash on our town square. We're gonna start them a little later, and we may have to have some social distancing. Everything's so fluid right now. I can't even tell you that whatever I'm saying tonight isn't gonna be changed in a week or so as the government, the state, and the CDC and AWHO changes their rules and regulations. Summit Park, wow, it is vibrant. If you haven't been there, any nice night, any nice day, if it's not pouring down rain and cold, it's busy. Our original three restaurants are all functioning. We also have an ice cream vendor there. They are happy. They're only having problems with getting staff, as everybody's having trouble getting staff around the entire country, it sounds like. But as far as having people be willing to come into the restaurants, we're kind of back at a good place as far as most of the restaurants I've talked to in Blue Ash are happy with the foot traffic, just not happy with staffing. So. Interesting. And again, this might change, but we are planning on having the Cincinnati Opera have 10 performances in Blue Ash this summer at Summit Park outside. Their season ticket holders will have first shot at getting tickets to nine of the concerts. One of them will be free, and then after that, the tickets will open up to the general public. So we were really excited to be able to get a venue for them. Could that change now that some of the guidelines are changing? Yes. But as far as we know, that's gonna happen this summer. We're doing outdoor cinemas. They did one last night. I think it was a Bug's Life, trying to get people there. Yoga, Zuma, line dancing, trying to do some free fitness to get people outside, get them together. We've got Farmer's Market every Wednesday and an off-market, which is, I guess, like a, oh, what do I wanna say? A trader's market. Flea market is what I'm trying to say. So we're gonna try that. Our rec department has been incredible trying to keep as many of our facilities open and as active as possible. They are changing every week. It seems like the rules and regs are changing, and we're allowed to have more people do more things. Senior living, interesting. Like Summit Park on the south side, 130 acres of Summit Park, there's a 100-acre parcel to the south. It was owned by Nire Development. We have apartments that are finished, about 290 apartments. We have about 104 single-family homes called Daventry on the very west side that is pretty much finished. They are working on a senior living facility right now called Anthology. It's gonna have some mostly independent living, quite a bit of assisted living, and even some memory care. And then we just approved some condos in that development, so you will be able to live pretty much any way you want to, right adjacent to Summit Park. I can't think of a better place for people's grandkids to come and visit than be able to come out and go to restaurants and a whole recreation area. There's a lake there, walking trails. There's two different playgrounds. So we're really excited about offering kind of a gamut in housing adjacent to Summit Park. Hazelwood Park is in the southeast corner, I'm sorry, the northeast corner of the city, and last year it was completely redone, new shelters, new bathrooms, and a whole new playground. So that's a really pretty, pretty park now, and its use has just skyrocketed up. If you know Blue Ash, you know the downtown, the corner of Kenwood and Cooper Road has been the northeast, northwest corner, has been an old gas station for as long as any of us can remember. And the city bought that property, two and a half acres. There is also a 3.8-acre parcel adjacent to it that's owned by Circle Development. We are at the very early stages of deciding what is appropriate for that property. I have a picture here. I don't know if this'll work, but this was the initial concept that Circle Development gave us, which would include apartments, retail, a hotel. It really fills up the space. We are obviously looking at the economic impact of it, and is it appropriate use of the land, the best use of the land? So that's very early in that. And right across the street is Town Square, where we have our Veterans Memorial. We are looking at redoing the entire town square, keeping the Veterans Memorial, but redoing it and relocating some of the features. We just bid out the architecture for that, actually, at our last meeting. So that's something that'll probably be done next year. Let's see. Duke's pipeline is coming on through. We still are in appeal, and our appeal should be ruled on by the Ohio Supreme Court about the same day that the pipeline's finished. So that's, they're tearing up Reed-Hartman Highway and going out Glendale-Milford Road at this time. So far, haven't had any problems with them at all. We also have a big road project we've been working on since 2015 through the, more of the south side of the city, Hunt Road and Plainfield Road. We're doing three roundabouts. Traffic, it's a very congested area right around Ronald Reagan Highway, the entrances and exits to that. So hopefully that will, over the next year, the project go through, and we will have a lot less traffic backed up in that area of the city. We are considering allowing golf carts in our community on the streets, as long as they're street legal. A couple residents have requested it, and we have some areas that would be very appropriate. It may be a very appropriate way to get to our park. Little bit of green there. We are thrilled about the crime lab, great for the region, great for the citizens, and we are very, very proud to have it located in our city. We are still trying to add a lot of sidewalks. We want every neighborhood to be able to be walkable or bikeable. We're not doing internal sidewalks, but we're trying to get everything over the course of the next year's, within the 7.7 square miles, connected safely. So that's a project that's going on. And that is a very quick summary of what's going on in Blue Ash right now. If anybody has any questions, please ask me.
Wow. So when are you guys gonna start doing some things out there?
The roundabouts will start in June.
I'm just kidding.
That's been a bit of a sore point with some of the neighbors. Afraid that the neighborhood, the Pepper Mill neighborhood, won't be as pretty, the entranceway, and we promised them it'll be pretty.
And roundabouts are always a point of controversy. So I'm just really excited about all the things that you have going on. I'm gonna open it up for our commissioners to see if they have any other questions. Did you want your village manager to speak, or is he not going to speak this evening?
He's not. You know, since we only had a few minutes, we talked about and said, hey, you know, just let's just have it be simple.
Wow.
I think I got through pretty much everything.
Wow. Yeah, so comprehensive and so exciting. Makes a person wanna come and move there, that's for sure.
That's the idea.
Yeah. Vice President Reese?
I just wanna thank the mayor and the city manager for inviting us and hosting us tonight. It was great seeing you again at the ribbon cutting with the Coroner and the crime lab, and certainly that partnership with Blue Ash for something that will be able to be groundbreaking and helpful for the entire region, and certainly hope to, you know, spur additional development around that area. So I'm really excited about that. Just. And Blue Ash, you know how I feel about Summit Park. It has a special place in my heart. I think we were, when I was a state representative, we had lunch and was talking about the second phase of it, I think, at that time, and to see how far it has come and how it is a major tourism attraction, which also brings in revenue for our county. So, and so also the hotels out there that certainly before COVID, and hopefully now after COVID, will continue to help bring funds into Hamilton County. And one of the things I missed last year and this year, because it had to cancel because of COVID, and we talked about this, is the Prince Hall Shriner's, who we, every year, take over the entire Embassy Suites and a number of hotels in Blue Ash. And I convinced them. Connected with that, and it just expanded their whole three-day weekend of convention, where we have Shriner's come from all over the country to Blue Ash for that event. So I'm looking forward to, again, having that event again next year. We couldn't have it this year and last year, but certainly for the last 20 years. So excited about that. I did have a question about Envision Theater. That is my favorite theater. I always call it, I love the movies, and that was, that is my spot. Is that going to reopen, or what's happening with that?
It doesn't look like the family who owned it's going to have any chance of reopening it. So yes, it's a, it's a big facility, and it's obviously very purpose-built, so that's gonna be a tough one. But, you know, I know Neil Hensley is looking for options. I'd love to see somebody come in there and restart it, 'cause that was my favorite place to go. I mean, you go, you eat, you drink, you watch a movie. It was lovely. It was comfortable. Sound was great. Video was great. And that's been, that's been a shame to lose.
Yes, that's state-of-the-art, and just, it spoiled me. I didn't have to get up and go get popcorn or food or dinner. They brought it to you with a button, so hopefully. And then also, just wanted to say, my chief of staff is Quinton Monroe, and he is the lead pastor of a church in Blue Ash, First Baptist of Hazelwood. So he's on today, and he spends a lot of time there with his congregation. So just excited about Blue Ash and all that is happening, and looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Wow, it's been a pleasure, and it was, like I said, so nice talking to all three of you at the Coroner's Office ribbon cutting, and I really thank you for what you do. I realize how easy my job is compared to the three of you, what you have to do, and the size and the spectrum is just incredible, and I thank you for all the hard work you three put in.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Serkin. You're being overly generous, but thank you. We'll take it. Thanks for having us. Wish we were there in person, but maybe next time we do an evening meeting in Blue Ash, we can all be sitting near one another. But it's great to hear about, you know, the build, building upon asset after asset, really, in Blue Ash. I think you have exemplified how you start with some great assets, some great partnerships, and just build, build, build on those over and over again, and Summit Park is the best example I can think of that. So it's great to hear that development is ongoing, and I look forward to getting out and seeing you at one of the celebrations in Blue Ash.
Well, thank you. I'm at Summit Park almost every day, walking my standard poodle. So if you see a blonde standard poodle and a short goofy-looking guy, that's us.
Okay, great, and I'll see you on Memorial Day celebration.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You're welcome to stay on. We're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan. If you'd like to hear from our county administrator, you're certainly.
I'd love to for a while, and I will mute myself so that I don't, I don't make any interruptions. Thank you so much for having me.
Great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So we'll move straight to our county administrator, Jeff Aluto.
Thank you, Madam President, and just a quick note to Mayor Serkin, just to thank him for the partnership between the county and Blue Ash. We've always had a fantastic partnership with the city, and I, in particular, just wanted to, I don't think they're on the call, but just wanted to give a particular thank you to city manager David Walts, assistant city manager Kelly Harrington, and economic development director Neil Hensley. They just, they just do fantastic work, and they're just, they're consummate professionals, and they're always great to deal with, and just wanted to thank them personally. So thank you, Mayor, for lending their talents to the community.
Thank you. I am very spoiled to work with those people. They're incredible.
They're great. They're great. Thank you so much. I'm going to provide, the board had requested just an update on the American Rescue Plan. The county administration had delivered to the board our recommendation for a concept plan just the other day. So I'm gonna walk through a PowerPoint here. I'm gonna start off with a little bit of an introduction. I'm gonna share my screen here. I'm gonna flip through this. I believe I'm sharing this and not Bridget, so I will forward through it here. Can folks see that?
Yes, we can.
All right. So just a brief summary for folks who may be watching from home, that this relates to the American Rescue Plan and the recommendations of county administration. This is not a board-approved plan at this point. This is entirely the recommendation of the administration, but it relates to the American Rescue Plan Act that was signed into law by the president back on March 11th of 2021. It was part of the $1.9 trillion, or the funds that we've received was part of the $1.9 trillion stimulus plan designed to address the health and subsequent economic challenges and impacts of COVID-19. Part of what is known as the American Rescue Plan Act was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that were designed to help state and local governments respond to COVID-19, both from a health perspective and an economic perspective. Federal entitlement communities, generally those with populations of over 50,000, were designated as direct recipients of this funding, and Hamilton County was designated to receive $158 million in two different tranches. The first tranche of funding, approximately $79 million, was actually received yesterday. This allocation is in addition to the approximately $27 million that the county received in emergency rental assistance funding through both the American Rescue Plan and previous allocation as well. And whereas the CARES Act, which provided the county with $142 million last year, which initially required that funds be spent within a year, these, the American Rescue Plan funds, we have a lot longer to spend them. We have to spend, we have to allocate those funds by the end of 2024 and spend all of the dollars by the end of 2026. So recognizing that the county was going to receive this funding, the board had asked the administration to begin a transparent process to gain input and recommend a roadmap for the use of these funds that best needs to meet with the community. So over the past couple of weeks, past several weeks, the administration has conducted four stakeholder sessions, during which time we've heard broadly about some of the most pressing needs in the community relating to the pandemic, and that input combined with continual board policy guidance provided us with the basis on which to make a recommendation for what we're calling a concept plan for allocating our ERP funding, or American Rescue Plan funding, which I will walk through now. First, a couple of notes. This, again, is a concept plan. It's a roadmap. It is not a detailed budget. For the most part, it is bins of allocations with specific programming to follow after the board makes a final decision and approves the plan. It's designed to be flexible. This may be the biggest point. The Treasury guidance that we've recently received helps us better understand eligible program areas, but there are still a lot of ambiguities, and we know, even based upon our experience with the CARES Act, that this is gonna be refined several times into the future. So there are items in this plan that might be listed under one category right now that we're gonna have to move to a different category once we get final program guidance. In fact, we have several questions that we want to ask Treasury specifically for clarification around things like use of funding for debt service, which right now appears to be unallowable. We had a conversation in staff meeting the other day about use of funds for tax-declared tax delinquencies, that type of thing. So a lot of questions that are still out there and questions that we want to ask as well. And of course, all of this is subject to the board's approval. So without further ado, I'm gonna walk through the concept plan, and it really, it is contained in four different bins: strengthening public health infrastructure, stabilizing county finances and operations, addressing negative economic impacts, and enhancing community infrastructure. I'm gonna walk first through the category of strengthening, strengthening public health in Hamilton County, which has $24 million allocated to it in total. The category is largely designed to ensure that we address the urgent needs of the pandemic. I think the board had indicated a desire to make sure that we addressed urgent needs as well as trying to be as transformative and long-term thinking as we possibly could. So the category attempts to do both, but this, the first category, emergent needs and long-term community resiliency, is really designed to make sure that we are addressing our public health needs. And that, kind of the mantra we use for this is that if we do have some type of a repeat of this five, 10 years down the road, and by this I mean COVID, that the public should be able to look back and say that the $158 million that we received helped us respond in a more robust and sustainable manner next time around, and that we should learn from what happened this time and make sure that our systems are stronger and more resilient next time around. Secondly, it, approximately $8 million is recommended towards behavioral and mental health. We know that the community and nation have seen a dramatic increase in cases of depression and anxiety, and even substance abuse over the past year linked to COVID-19. So we have money targeted in this plan towards addressing the anticipated surge in demand for programming, strengthening our mobile crisis units, could be providing technology upgrades to ensure the ability to provide services rapidly and remotely. All of those things would be eligible expenditures under this type of an allocation. We also have $10 million allocated towards funding for disproportionately impacted communities. We have, we've included funding for providing direct outreach into vulnerable communities to enable more direct access to health and economic benefits. And we've also put money into the plan to assist the county and city with relocation of the CPD gun range due to the compounding impact that the pandemic has had on the stress and anxiety that is already created by that facility and some of the surrounding communities. The second category is stabilizing the county's finances. We've allocated $37 million towards that area. This includes $20 million of revenue replacement, where we have, we can show a loss of revenue throughout all general purpose areas of the county between 2019 and this year, and even next. There's a very detailed calculation that Treasury requires to determine whether you're eligible for revenue replacement. We have conservatively estimated that we would be eligible for around $20 million. We have $5 million, or we've also put in dollars for capital improvements to county facilities. Now, these have to be improvements specifically related to making our buildings more robust and strengthened against COVID, as well as just disease prevention in general. We also have allocated funding for a satellite office construction to make sure that we are more effectively engaging the populations outside of the core of Hamilton County, and particularly engaging disproportionately impacted and vulnerable communities. We have dollars set aside for public safety payroll allocation, as we had done with the CARES Act. We have money set aside for providing premium pay to eligible workers who engaged in essential work during the pandemic. And we have funding, some funding to administer our American Rescue Plan grant, as well as funding to support EMA operations, the personal protective equipment purchasing, the different supplies for responding to the pandemic, the housing of the vaccine, the warehousing of all these things, et cetera, is also included in this area. A brief word before I move on about revenue replacement. The American Rescue Plan does not allow revenue replacement to be used for various purposes, including expanding fund balance. So you can't take money from the American Rescue Plan, use it for lost revenue, and just have it pad a fund balance. So you essentially have to provide government services with those dollars, and those government services are, the Treasury guidance puts some limitations or has some pretty rigid suggestions around how those dollars can be used. So in our, in our concept. So in our, in our concept plan, and as I have provided to the board in a narrative that is posted on our website, we've recommended those dollars going towards a couple of purposes, most of them being infrastructure, a consolidated EMA and 911 facility, completion of, of infrastructure on the banks. We have IT improvements in county buildings and we have some infrastructure funding for road and park infrastructure as well. So just that, there is some, the Treasury guidance is a little tricky as it relates to revenue replacement. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear with the board and all this is much more, is laid out in much more detail in our narrative, which the board has. Next is the category of addressing negative economic impacts. The largest component of this, really the largest single component of the recommendation in general is, relates to housing. We've heard about housing and affordable housing and supportive housing and transitional housing in so many of our stakeholder sessions that we've held. Almost every session we held had something that came up about housing, whether it was from those advocating for seniors or just homeless advocates or housing professionals themselves, economic development professionals. Housing and the need for affordable housing choices in this community continued to be raised as a primary need of the community and was recommended in all of our stakeholder sessions. So under this category, we have everything from the production of new affordable housing to the preservation and maintenance of existing affordable housing stock. We have homeless protections like shelter diversion programs could be allocated under this as well as a program of mortgage and homeowner assistance under the program as well. We also have the recommendation of 15 million for workforce development, which could include anything from supporting childcare in the, in the county to make sure that, that we have a robust system of childcare so that folks who are on the sidelines in the workforce can re-enter the workforce if childcare is a barrier, as well as a focus on youth services and direct targeted training as well. We also have programming recommended, or we're recommending that programming be developed around nonprofit assistance, back office support for small businesses and minority business enterprises, who, as we went through the CARES Act, we learned that some of these businesses just run phenomenal enterprises and the thing, and the work they do in the community is fantastic, but really struggle economically with the provision of back off, back office services. And so there are a few initiatives in the community design that are being designed to address this. So we put some funding into the plan to leverage some of those solutions as well. Another round of small business assistance is recommended as well as some targeted assistance to the hospitality industry as well as the arts and cultural industry as well in Hamilton County. And finally, the, the American Rescue Plan is very big on the issue of infrastructure, particularly broadband. And so we, while we do not have specific programming listed at this point in time, there's more detail on this in the narrative, but we are recommending $10 million to address broadband infrastructure affordability and access issues in Hamilton County, again, with the premise being that next time something happens like this, we want to make sure that we as a community, especially as it relates to our disproportionately impacted community, that everyone has the ability to do the things that people were required to do during this pandemic, like remote workforce and remote learning opportunities and things like that. And we also put money aside for some targeted and strategic sewer and stormwater projects as well. We have public hearings coming up on Tuesday, May 25th at 5:30. We have another public hearing on Thursday at 1:00 PM. So we're, the idea would be to conduct these hearings. And then from there, we would receive guidance from the board on how the board would like to see this plan changed, modified, added to, attracted from. The administration would then develop a final budget that would include more detail around each of these programs and bring that back to the board for, for final approval. Recognizing that some of these programs may stay conceptual for a longer period of time while we get started very quickly on, on some of these other programs to get some of these dollars out into the community, especially where we have urgent pain and urgent need of certain populations. So commissioners, that's a very quick run-through of what is a very broad plan with a lot of different elements to it. So Madam President, I will turn it back over to you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Jeff. I just wanted to indicate also that we are working collaboratively with the City of Cincinnati to make sure there's no redundancy of expenditures and that we can combine our monies to do some of the same things in certain areas. And as we look at broadband, for instance, and infrastructure, there is more money coming down from the federal government also for broadband, so we don't just have to, to use our own money. I had, thank you for their report, Jeff. I had a couple of the comments, but I will open it up to Vice President Reese. If she has anything she'd like to say as relates to this draft concept.
Yeah, thanks. I think the draft is a very good start for us and for the public. Looking forward to the public comment. Wanted to just emphasize some who may not see the rental assistance on here. Rental assistance will be funded or is funded in another pot and we've already received those dollars. So just wanted to let people know rental assistance has not been abandoned at all by us, and I think that's questions that we had asked in a previous meeting, but just wanted to reemphasize that as this draft has come out. The other thing is wanting to make sure, I know we're looking for some more guidance from the Treasury, but wanted to say that definitely I'm very interested in how we can reduce and any way to help the tax burden on homeowners. And certainly if we're able to, able to do that, I introduced a motion last week to look at those things. And I know the Treasury introduced also some things to look at. And I just wanted to reiterate that those things are being looked at as we look at what are we able to do as it relates to helping to reduce that tax burden. We have way too many people that got hit extremely hard, whether it's the assessments went up and their taxes, you know, went up or they got hit by COVID and was unable to pay those additional, the additional burden. So we do want people to hold on to their homes. And we had a great presentation on Tuesday about some of the issues of out-of-town investors coming in and buying up properties that are vulnerable because people had, weren't able to keep up on the taxes. And we certainly want to reduce that. We want people to be able to hold on to their homes. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it's not over. We are asking that everything be looked at and we're not spending up all the money. If there's an opportunity there, there's some money that would be set aside possibly if we're able, if the Treasury comes back and says, yes, we're able to do it this way or that way, we would be able to at least consider that going forward. And then the last thing that I just want to say on this piece is, and I've talked to the administration about it, certainly looking at how can we help reduce the burden on sewer bills? And, and I'm happy to, that the administration is looking into that and will be able to hopefully bring some that we could look at and consider before we make our final, our final vote. It could fall under the category of utility assistance. So just wanted to point those things out, some of the things that I saw. And I think could be some things possibly added as we are going through this process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Jeff, for the presentation. And I want to thank the whole team for all the work that has gone into and will go into helping all of us develop this plan together. I know it builds upon the work of last year with the CARES Act. And that was an extremely time-intensive, labor-intensive process. And I feel like this is kind of in that same category. So, you know, thank you to you and Holly in particular, and all those that are contributing, and to the folks on the internal and the external teams that you formed to get ideas, to understand needs, to see what things still need to be addressed through these dollars. I think that was a great way to start off and I applaud you for that. And I too will look forward to the public hearings here, I guess, next week. So more to come there. So a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. First of all, you know, there are dollars in here to stabilize the operations of Hamilton County, which I think is extremely important as we make sure that we are doing the basic services that we need to do for the citizens of the county. But then there are some other things that are new, they're exciting, they're innovative. Though one of the ones that stands out to me is the 911 EMA facility. I did have the chance to tour 911. It is, it is not the best environment for the call takers at 911. And they're doing such an extremely important job for the county and for our residents. So I was glad to see that in there. The housing piece is comprehensive and I will look forward to talking to you, Jeff, more about the partnerships that are anticipated there, not only with the City of Cincinnati, but with some of the housing experts in this community. We've been hearing from them over the last year and a half. And so I'll be excited to see how that rolls out. The mortgage assistance is in there. I'll be interested to see how exactly we're going to manage to do that piece as well because we weren't able to do that in the last round. I was glad to see the childcare was in there. You know, I heard from somebody the other day that said that they didn't understand how childcare was part of getting people back to work. And I reminded them that many women are ahead of household and need childcare to get back to work. And so this to me is a critical piece of making sure that the workforce can get back ASAP to the work that they were doing pre-pandemic. I love the mental health piece and noted that there were significant dollars for that because I think people are really struggling in that space. And then some of the infrastructure investments, the IT in particular, along with the sewer. I'm again interested to see if, how we're going to manage to do that. We did try last time and couldn't quite figure that out. So I'll be interested to get more details on that. And then I also want to note that there is a reserve that's been set aside in the case that we need to have some flexibility as we go through this, because this one is a longer process than the last one. I'm not sure if that's good or bad, by the way, but it is. And so I think it's wise to set aside some monies in the reserve as we continue to learn from the community what the needs are. So I, I appreciate all the hard work. Again, I look forward to the ongoing conversation with you, my colleagues, and with the public to solidify this plan here in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be certain for those who are watching, there is a public meeting on Tuesday, May the 25th at 5:30 to allow some of the ones who can't be on during the day, the public, to be able to come in on during the evening to give your input. And then once again, May the 27th on Thursday at 1:00 PM during the day to give your input on where you think we should spend the monies. And so I'm not going to go through all the items that you guys already talked about. I'm excited about all the ones that are on there. I'm even excited about the allocation and the decision to allocate the certain amounts we made, that may fluctuate, fluctuate. I'm sure it will, but just, Jeff, I was going to ask you about our phone system that we said we were going to upgrade. Did that money come through the CARES Act or we're going to be doing additional money for that phone system?
Yeah, we had put money aside for the phone system and we're actually looking at that project. It's a project that's under telecom. I will follow up on the status of it, Commissioner, and see where we are with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And, and especially excited about the Lincoln Heights gun range and the allocation that we've given. It shows our level of commitment as a county because it is a CPD gun range. And, but we're trying to be good partners and to move that gun range and close the gates. So I'm extremely excited about that opportunity. Just wanted to make some general comments as we found out about the monies that were coming down to all of us in this area. We took our time on purpose. Some people jumped right out of the gate and started saying what they were going to do with the monies. And we were very strategic, very, very methodical and very intentional. And we put the people first. You look at the numbers that have been allocated so far and it's all about, everything is all about the people and what can benefit the people and what can benefit them the most immediately? And also to sustain those people. Of course, we know that we have to put money into infrastructure, like I just mentioned about the phone system and other things and, and capital issues. But the people, you'll see that this board is very people-oriented. And so the people come first and that's why, that's one reason why we're having the public hearing. That's one reason why you see the priorities that you see. The priorities that are on this plan are also priorities in our budget coming up for 2022. So it won't differ very much. We're trying to coordinate all of that together and stay focused on what the board's policy agenda is. I also want to thank the administration for such a well-thought-out approach, including the board's priorities and also the stakeholders, as was mentioned earlier. Now the people will speak through public hearings and we will listen. So we encourage all of you that are listening, tell the people that are not listening to please be a part of this public hearing, hearings that are coming forth. So as we said earlier, this is just the beginning. Bridget, I would like to know if there's anybody in the queue, even though public hearing is not till next week, but they may have known that this was going to be discussed and may have something to say.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't see any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well then we will move forward. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it so much. Okay, so we'll go to Vice President Reese. Do you have any comments or motions?
Madam President, I don't have any motions today. And I think most of our comments were said during the American Rescue. So looking forward to the public hearings.
Okay, I didn't know if you had additional comments unrelated to that. So Commissioner Drew House.
Thanks, Madam President. There is a plane flying over my house, so I hope you can hear me. Two things. One is that we were all at the Lick Run MSD project, the daylighting of the stream down in South Fairmount. And I was, it's been a long time coming. I was very excited to help celebrate that with the, another city-county partnership. And so as I said, that's been about 10, 12 years in the making. And it's really a cool project, a transformational for the community. So I just want to, once again, applaud MSD for doing a green, a green approach to separating the stormwater from the sewage. And secondly, and finally, I have a proclamation and I think you got, oh yeah. So you all saw it, signed it. Alex Linder is on. So as you both know, as you all know, Alex Linder has accepted a new job, a new opportunity at the Board of Elections. He'll be the deputy director over there. It's a spectacular opportunity for Alex. He will be spectacular at it. It's right into his wheelhouse. He will be over there being the legal eagle in some of those rooms and protecting voters' rights. And I really think it's exciting for Alex and just a really great opportunity for him. On the other hand, I'm leaving, losing my chief of staff. And as I think you guys know, Alex has been in the office since the very beginning. He helped run that, well, he ran the campaign back in 16 and then joined the office right after and has been with the office since the beginning. So Alex, you will be sorely missed. I'm so grateful for your service. You, I was trying to think through some of the things that you have especially worked on. It's really everything. And you've just lent your expertise to all conversations and you have worked like crazy to make sure that the county gets its best work from you and from our office. And so I'm, I'm personally very, very grateful for that. But also in the four years, you have helped with the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. It's one of the things that we inherited and you have really led the way there, especially on the lead project, the pre-arrest diversion project that would not have gotten off the ground without your work. Alex also headed up a lot of the work with the Commission on Women and Girls. Fatima has taken over now, but Alex started with Nate Simon. So that was really important work at that time. We were launching something new. And again, Alex, he's got a couple of girls at home and so he had a special soft spot, I think, for the Commission on Women and Girls. He's worked on things like the family leave policy that is especially important to a person who has a large family, like Alex Linder does. He's done some work on bail ref- He's done some work on bail reform, the eviction prevention issue, the CARES Act. He's helped on the briefings. I mean, honestly, it's really everything that we've worked on. So I don't want to go into, and I'm not going to read the proclamation, obviously, because I don't have it. I already gave it to Alex. But we are through the proclamation, thank you for showing, through the proclamation, we are declaring tomorrow Alex Linder Day in all of Hamilton County. And so hurrah for Alex. We'll miss you, but congratulations on your new journey.
Yeah, and I would like to say a few words. I mean, I can't even recognize Alex. I didn't think that was him. He looks like a whole different person. But anyway, Alex, I thank you for all that you've done. And I had a new Chief of Staff, and you were very helpful and assisted in that process. And I certainly appreciate it, and I wish you the best. And I know you'll do well wherever you go.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Alex, certainly, we need to make sure we have very strong leadership with our Board of Elections. And I know that you'll stay up all night and make sure that everyone has a fair election. He and I got a chance to work together on those issues from the outside through the party, making sure that everybody has an opportunity to, every vote is counted. And he was always helpful and always making sure and being a voice to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to do that. So certainly, a good match for Alex to be there. I could see some, a lot of people have a passion, and I know he'll have a passion for this. He'll sleep, eat, and think about making sure that we have a number-one voting process in the whole county. So I just want to say congratulations again, and it's a good fit for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Did you want to say something, Alex?
Madam President?
Yes.
Before Alex says anything, if I could just, very briefly, I just wanted to just mention that at a high level, I think that the Office of the Chief of Staff is really one of the more underappreciated and unseen offices throughout the county organization. But it is just so incredibly important to all the work that gets done here. And Alex, you have handled the work of this office with just the utmost of professionalism. You've kept the affairs of the Dree House office moving seamlessly. And you're going to be sorely missed. So but obviously, I know you're not going far, so we'll be able to talk. And I know for a fact that Assistant Administrator for Budget and Finance Brugan is actively preparing for the first budget sessions with the Board of Elections with co-director Linder. So we look forward to those conversations. But thank you for all that you've done, and thanks for your partnership over the past several years.
Well, first, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the kind words and the support that you've given me all the, over all the years. I think, you know, you can't say enough about what a blessing it is to wake up every day excited to go to work. And I can say with complete honesty that that's how I felt coming to the Todd Porteen Center every day, working with Commissioner Dreehouse and the other commissioners and the administration. I hope that the people of Hamilton County really understand what a smart, dedicated, and hard-working team they have working for them on the sixth floor of the Todd Porteen Center. Because everybody in that building just gives their all and does top-notch excellent work on a daily basis. Especially in the last year, when we had everything turned upside down and had to change the whole way we do work. What this organization did in developing one hundred and fifty million-plus dollars worth of new programs to help people stay in their homes, to help people get tested for coronavirus, to get, provide access to vaccines, the lift that everybody around us put into that work was just tremendous. And I hope that the people out there watching can appreciate, you know, what quality public servants we have working for us. And and it is because of the example of you all that I had the confidence to take this next step and continue my career in public service. And so I just truly appreciate all of the support, the guidance, all of the strategy sessions, everything you all have taught me over the years. And before I lose my composure, just to Commissioner Dreehouse, you know, five years ago, you took a chance on me to run a campaign that was not a sure thing if we were going to win. And, you know, before that, I had what a lot of people would call a good job, but you know, I didn't have a passion for my job. And you gave me the opportunity to do what I love. And I've grown so much watching you and learning from you. And I just can't thank you enough for everything that you've given me and my family. And I'm going to stop now because I'm about to lose it. I've always wanted one of these. I've written several of them, but I've never gotten one for myself. So I'm very excited to celebrate Alex Linder Day tomorrow.
Hey.
Hope you all join me for a drink.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Okay. Did anyone else want to speak? I just wanted, I felt like there may be some other people that have worked with Alex that might want to say something. I'm not going to go by protocol right now, but if you might.
We do have a happy hour tomorrow, so. At four-thirty, so everyone is welcome to join.
Yeah, for those that are not going to the happy hours, Bishop Hilton is unmuted himself.
As being a Chief of Staff, I just want to say thanks, Alex. You were an excellent example, a wonderful teacher. From the day I walked into this office, you grabbed me right away and began to step me around and teach me the ropes and show me how to do things. And I don't want it to be not known to everyone, that I really, really appreciate the attitude that you grabbed me and embraced me with and just helped me. And as you said, yes, the last year was a year, but together, we walked through that thing. And it was a wonderful, wonderful time I had working with you. And look forward to speaking to you more as we go forward. And congratulations again. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job.
Thank you. Anyone else before we end it, or before Denise ends it? Okay, well, thank you all. Thank you.
I would like to say one thing. Okay, I just want to say congratulations, Alex, as a Chief of Staff that has come in. And as Bishop said, that you did embrace me coming in as a Chief of Staff and learning, you know, the process is how things are. So I know that you will do great things, and you will do well. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of our Office Chief of Staff, Commissioner Reese. It's been a pleasure to work with you and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. We'll move forward. But, you know, Alex made some poignant statements as it relates to the county and the quality of staff that we have here. I've worked I've worked with so many staffs in so many different situations, and the quality can't even be compared to the ones that we have here. Hamilton County is like a diamond in the rough. The things, people that don't even know me, and they read about the things that the commission has done in this county and the great things, not little things, great things that we've done in this county. And so we just are quiet about it, and we do our work and keep it moving. But we are doing some great things, and I'm proud to be a part of this, of this board. So we'll move forward. It wasn't about me, and it's not about me, but I just thought about what Alex said. We just have to give kudos to everybody who's on tonight. Okay, Jeff, we actually have you down if you had anything else that you'd like to comment on.
Just one brief, no other comments, no by-leave items, Madam President, aside from just a quick comment. As I advised the board the other day, I messaged to the workforce yesterday that I think the board is well aware that June one is our return from remote. You know, we've got a lot of employees that are working in the office, but we have a lot of employees that are working remotely. Departments under the board have put together strategies and plans for starting to re-onboard those folks where it makes sense. Some of those plans are going to take a little bit of time. There are some areas of the county where it makes sense to stay remote longer. We've just learned that it's more efficient, it's better for the job, and it's better for service to the public to do that. But as of June one, we'll start to see a lot more faces around all of our buildings. People will be back. And we've also sent out word to Board of County Commissioner departments that as of June one, we will officially be following CDC guidance as it relates to masking in county buildings, again, for Board of County Commissioner employees. So I see this as, again, just a really good piece of news that we're, number one, getting back to normal from a work environment, but also starting to pass some some hurdles as it relates to the pandemic as well. So just wanted to indicate to the board that I did send that notification out to the board employees yesterday.
Thank you so much. We'll move forward to our regular agenda. Our engineer, Eric Beck, is on for item number one.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
A lot of exciting things going on tonight. It's hard to follow up on all of that. We just have one item tonight, which is actually a Hamilton County Stormwater District item. It's a resolution authorizing an optional renewal agreement with a third renewal term with CDM Smith for professional consultant services for the NPDES Phase II permit term for the Hamilton County Stormwater District located in Hamilton County. The cost on that is six hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that, those funds come out of the Stormwater District. Todd Long, our program director, is here if you have any questions, specific questions that I can't answer.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'll open it up. Vice President Reese, you have any questions or comments about item one?
No questions on item one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
Okay. All righty, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Ms. Samardumus?
Yes.
Ms. Reese? Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Reese, did you vote, hon? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I think she's frozen.
I think her screen is frozen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe she could put it in the chat.
You can hear us.
Can you hear me? Yes.
We hear you now.
Okay. Work going outside, outside of my house. I don't know what's going on. They're picking up something.
Right. And during the meeting, you've been cut off by maybe one or two words. So have you noticed that you're froze? You can put it in the chat for a vote. Okay? Okay, very good. So item number two is MSD. Who do we have for that item? There he is.
Evening Commissioners. Jack Brennecamp from MSD. I hope you're all doing well. Thank you for entertaining this item tonight. And also, on behalf of Director Diana Christie, thank you for your kind words and intuitive remarks at the Lick Run Greenway opening this past Tuesday. We enjoyed hosting you there for that ceremony and that event. Tonight is just a single item for MSD. It is the 2021 Final Assessments for Sewer Assessment Projects. There are three projects that are being finally assessed, and I'll run through those very briefly. But to set it within context, Final Assessments is a part of a process in the sewer assessment process that allows the board, as well as MSD, to invoice and then collect the amount from those property owners who wanted, requested, and have agreed to have sewers built to serve their parcels. In these three cases, there are sewer laterals that are connecting to existing public sewers. And so they provide them with the benefit of public sewerage, removing them from private septic systems. These three properties, then being assessed, have also agreed to pay a portion of the cost of each project, and that cost for them doesn't exceed twelve thousand dollars per MSD Rules and Regulations. Most of this process is, if not all of the process, is driven by both the rules and regulations, but more importantly, by the revised code that provides certain timeframes and requirements that MSD and the board must undertake. So these three projects are Struble Road in Corrane Township, Mill Road and Springfield Township, and Ridge Road in Amberly Village. And these are individual homes within each of those locations. The collective cost of the projects combined is, was estimated at a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And the final collective total for all three projects combined is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Again, property owners pay twelve thousand dollars each of that, of those, their individual costs. And MSD has a credit that supplements their cost, which collectively, again, totals ninety thousand dollars. Each property having a credit that ranges from eighteen thousand to thirty-nine thousand dollars. So what does this process, various elements comprise, and what is MSD requesting you to do? The first thing is MSD is requesting the board to make a determination and authorize that the amounts will be collected by MSD. And after a statutory period of thirty days, if it's not collected within that timeframe, the amounts will be placed on a property tax duplicate for future collection over a twenty-year term with both interest and an auditor's fee. And in 2019, the interest for sewer assessments was at one point eight four percent. As I mentioned, benefited property owners have thirty days in which to choose either to pay the assessment in full and part, or to place it on their property tax duplicate. And that timeframe in the legislation in front of you ends on June twenty-third at four o'clock. And on May twenty-one, MSD will send out those letters, assuming that this legislation is approved by you at this point in time. At the end of March, MSD had sent out what we call an early warning letter to these three property owners, indicating that final assessments were anticipated to be levied in May of 2021, and to prepare themselves financially, as well as to prepare to pay for these assessments within that timeframe. Again, the thirty-day timeframe is mandated by statute. It's not in our rules and regulations. Once all collection is made by MSD, we'll report to the county administration what has been collected, what has not been collected. And if indeed there still remains out of those three properties, uncollected amount, that will then be accommodated through a sale of special assessment bonds, which Director Brugan then manages for the county. Our deadline in this process is to report to the county auditor by September thirteenth. Again, a statutory deadline, who has paid, who has not paid, in order that these costs can be collected on the property tax duplicate. Again, it's for twenty years and in forty semi-annual payments. So the request, again, is to approve the final assessments and to go forward with the collection period, and then all the other processes that stem from that, up to reporting to the auditor in September. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Jack. And I was just, all the questions I had, you just answered, because I was saying about the thirty-day timeframe. Can we do something? And you were saying it's by statute, and so it would take a little bit more than us and a little more time, some legislative advocacy to make that happen. But I will open it up to my colleagues, Vice President Reese. I don't know if you were.
Yes, I was. I switched devices, so hopefully this helps. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse? You're muted.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number two.
I'm going to second. I think she's frozen again.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Ms. Samardumus?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
We'll give her a minute.
Oh, yeah, she popped off.
Wait, can we go back, Jack? Jackie, once she comes back on to get the third vote or not? Can we go back? Can we go? Okay. And then when she comes on, we'll go back to item.
I guess I'm going to say that she may have problems with all the rest of them as well.
Well.
Maybe she'll get worked out.
Hopefully not. Yeah, okay. There she is. Okay.
You're muted. That'd be the area.
Just say yes.
Yes. It has to be the area because I've had my phone, my computer, so it has to be the area.
Okay, so when we were saying, just say yes, this is item two.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So we're going to go to our consent agenda items. There are quite a few of them. Just bear with me for a minute. I tried to do a little bit of a summary and then I divided them up a little. So as we look at our consent agenda items, I'm going to ask you, and I'll make a motion in a minute, to adopt items three through nine. And some of the items that are in three through nine are appointing three members to the Tax Increment Review Council. And also, in addition, amending the Harrison Township and the City of Harrison Developmental District Agreement. In addition, we have a budget adjustment for several entities, Juvenile Court, the Engineers, Clerk of Court, and the Lodging Tax for about $6 million. Then we have active monies that will be awarded to public, I wonder what that was. Monies awarded to public. Yeah, I should not abbreviate, but okay. And then we have an upgrade of fire alarm system for juvenile youth center. We have a $1 million agreement for the Free Store Food Bank. And then we also are being asked to approve the tentative collective bargaining agreement between JFS and Ask Me Local 1768. And those are items three through nine, and I would make a motion to adopt those items.
Thank you.
Ms. Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we'll move forward. We have items 15 through 17 and item number 19. And the items that are included in that is an agreement with the YWCA in behalf of JFS and Child Welfare Domestic Violence Services Connection, almost $500,000. And then there's an agreement between Law Office of the Public Defender on behalf of JFS for Guardian at Lytton expenses with $581,000. And then we have an original agreement with Easter Steels Tri-State on behalf of JFS for $374,000. And then I will be asking to authorize a credit card usage for the Treasurer's Office of $1,200. Any discussion on, I'm asking you to adopt items 15 through 17 and items 19? Any questions or comments on those?
No questions.
Okay. You have any questions? Yeah, I didn't know if you were frozen or what. All right, so I make a motion to adopt item 15 through 17 and item 19.
Second.
Ms. Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we also have to receive for the record items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and item 18. And this is 10 through 14 are JFS items authorized by the interim director for their, for November through March. A report of their bid awards and contracts that were authorized. So it started in November all the way up to March 2021. And then the other item that I'm asking you to accept for the record is two liquor licenses permits. There were no objections from the Sheriff's Department. Any questions or comments on receiving for record?
Madam President, the only thing I have is we've seen a couple Bob Evans, and this is just so much, so much new news to me. I did not know Bob Evans had alcohol. So that's interesting. I don't drink at all, but I just never, I never thought of Bob Evans and alcohol.
I think it's new.
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record the items that were listed.
Second.
Ms. Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just looking on here to make sure. I'm looking here on the Treasurer's Resolution. And even though I did read it, I just wanted to make sure, Jackie, that I said, because I said 10 through 14 and item, okay, that was adoption. That's why I didn't. Okay, very good. And I'm just really chomping at the bit to make a comment. I was debating if I was going to make it. I know I have to adjourn, but everybody's talking about the Lick Run Greenway. And I was really, it's really funny to me because when we were there, I could hardly focus thinking about Alicia. And I saw all these little bugs running around where the waterway was. And I was hoping they were not, you know, the C-word, the cicadas, because I was hoping that she didn't get up and have to start running or anything. So I'm glad that they were not cicadas. They were just some sort of river bugs or something. But I did think about you, Alicia, and hoping that that didn't happen. So because you had forewarned us what would happen if it didn't. Okay, any additional comments, Vice President Reese?
No additional comments.
Okay, Commissioner Dree House?
No comments.
She's just shaking her head. So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dree House?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.